All right, good afternoon, everybody. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We'll be holding hearings on several nominations for various boards and commissions. So everybody who's participating, if you can turn on your camera, and then we will get started. I will go through first and see what members of the committee are here. I see we have Councilman Torrance, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Conway, Council Vice President Middleton. So thank you very much for being here. I'll just go in order of the nominations on my list. And so we will start with EA twenty-two dash zero zero eight nine. Alexandra Grayson, Member of Commission on Sustainability.
Put your walkies on so we can talk.
If everybody can mute themselves. We're up to you.
The same COVID, Gianna Poson.
Richard, can you just, can you mute everybody until, until we get to them? The format will be very simple. When I call your name, if you can just introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the board or commission that you're nominated to. If the committee has any questions, they will ask you. And I will just ask you to keep it brief, being that we have approximately thirty nominations to go through. So if Alexandra Grayson, Commission on Sustainability, we will start with you.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Grayson. I am a 2018 graduate of Baltimore City College and a third-generation Baltimore resident. I'm interested in serving on the Sustainability Commission because of my long-term interest.
We can't see you. Does your camera work?
I can get on a device where my camera does work, if that's okay. It might just take me a second.
Okay.
All right, I guess we can turn back.
I will go to the next one, then we'll come back.
We've gotten some messages that there are bandwidth problems, so some people may have trouble accessing the camera.
That's fine. We'll go on to the next one. EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine zero, Stacy Griffin, Member of Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stacy Griffin. I am thirty years old, lifelong Baltimore City resident. I have two children in Baltimore City School. I'm currently working in community outreach in Baltimore City and the surrounding counties to help build a better Baltimore. I'm a homeowner. I purchased my home through Habitat for Humanity. So the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is near and dear to my heart for people who may not think that homeownership is attainable for them. I was one of those people before I was introduced to Habitat. And it's also important to me because research shows that about seventy percent of wealth is attained through homeownership. So it's important to help close some of the wealth gap that presents itself in Baltimore City as well as across the country.
Okay, thank you very much. And if any members of the committee or council have any questions, feel free to pipe up. Otherwise, we will just keep on going. Next up, we have EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine one Cedric Lee, Member of Commission on Sustainability.
He's on now. Finally managed to elevate him.
And Rebecca, if there's anybody who you wanted to speak on, feel free to just pipe up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cedric Lee. I am a third-generation Baltimore native. I graduated from Baltimore Polytechnic Institute, also went to Howard University. I'm interested in serving on the Commission of Sustainability because growing up in South Baltimore, particularly Westport, I did see a lot of environmental injustices and also saw a lot of environmental degradation. After my time at Howard University, I came back to Baltimore City. There, I actually fell in love with the city. I was one of the lead people on 2020 Census Project. And going throughout the city, you know, you see, for me, it was relearning how to, how I fell in love with Baltimore for the first time. So meeting all these different types of Baltimoreans, going inside neighborhoods I would have never thought I actually went into, and also just learning the history of Baltimore and seeing the actual potential that this city has. So me joining on to the Commission of Sustainability is my way of continuing my public service and to help Baltimore become greener, meaner, and a better city for the next generation.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see if Alexandra Grayson is back yet. No, all right, we'll keep going. EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine two Jared Lyles, Member of Commission on Sustainability.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jared Lyles. I am pretty much lifelong city resident. I left briefly for college and returned to the city. I am a mechanical engineer at Maryland Energy Advisors. I've spent about fifteen years working towards energy efficiency and sustainability in the Baltimore area, working for Baltimore City Weatherization Assistance Program, helping lower-income homeowners make their homes more efficient. I've also worked for Baltimore City Rexon Parks as biking coordinator. And I currently serve in a role providing advisements to utilities and local business owners for helping their commercial buildings become more energy-efficient. My goal is really to bring my expertise that I've gained in the energy efficiency field and nature and outdoor recreation to the Sustainability Commission and hopefully build a better Baltimore with the rest of the commissioners.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Grayson is back on.
Yeah, I see. Okay, we will now go back to Alexandra Grayson, a Member of Commission on Sustainability.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Thanks for bearing with me. Yeah, I was a 2018 graduate, Baltimore City College. During that time, I helped out with the Sustainability Office of Sustainability and with the Baltimore Styrophone Campaign, and that was kind of what motivated me to get into the environmental field and the sustainability space. So I'm looking to graduate this spring from Howard University and hope to ultimately return to Baltimore to do sustainability work. So I would love to, you know, be able to continue working with the Commission. I've enjoyed the meetings that I've been able to sit in on so far.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine three Kevin O'Connor, Member of Board of Fire Commissioners.
Mr. Chair Nina Themelis with Government Relations. Mr. O'Connor is having some technical difficulties and is trying to sign back in via phone, so he may be another moment or two.
Okay, we'll keep going. Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine four Erica Fox, A Member of Affordable Housing Erica, can you hear us?
Okay, I guess I'm muted, Mr. Chair.
Erica, are you there? Yes, they're also having technical difficulties. We'll come back to, to those two nominees. Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine five Tisha Guthrie, A Member of Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Yes, Chairman, thank you. My name is Tisha Guthrie. I am a licensed social worker as well as a long-term, a long-time housing justice advocate. I currently serve on the first iteration of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Have been serving since 2019. And as you can imagine, it's been quite a shift to go from serving in person to doing this, this heavy and very important work during this global pandemic. I was a part of the lobbying effort to pass the Maryland Home Act, which makes it illegal to discriminate against individuals who are applying for rental or any kind of housing based on source of income. After quite a long haul, we finally got that passed on the local level. As you probably know, Baltimore was first, and then we pushed forward to get it passed on the state level. I also have been working with Baltimore Renters United and RUM, which is Renters United Maryland, to work to promote more just legislation on both the city and the state level. I am a renter. I too graduated from Baltimore City College High School, much, much earlier, back in 1992. And I'm a lifelong Baltimore resident, save the time I, I went to school, went to college. So I do understand that the lack of affordable housing in Baltimore is a huge issue. A lot of issues that we deal with around social justice in Baltimore are very intersectional, and a lot of them come back to the lack of affordable housing, no place to call home. We have a lot of brothers and sisters in this town who don't have a place to call home. Homelessness, couch surfing, and just instability of housing in and of itself leads to trauma. It leads to our children being traumatized and being in a very unstable foundation, having a very unstable foundation. So I'm really hoping to push forward with the very important work that we're doing on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I'm glad to be here.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick question, since you've been working on this for, for a very long time. Do you believe that the high property taxes in Baltimore City contributes to the lack of affordable homeownership?
What I think contributes to the lack of affordable homeownership is the commodification of homeownership. I think that homeownership or housing is a human right and that there's a huge problem when that human right is commodified and people are given the right, the right to make, to maximize their profit. So I, I think that is the biggest problem.
So, so do the, do the high property taxes in Baltimore City contribute to the problem? Or is that a separate?
I'm, I'm not an economist, so I really can't answer that question. It, it may have something to do with it, but I'm sure it's not the, the, the majority of the problem. That's, I guess that's just my purview. But again, I'm not an economist.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
Of course.
Next up is EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine six Anthony Williams, A Member of Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Mr. Chair Nina Themelis, I'm trying to get in touch with Mr. Williams at this moment. He had not been able to join as of this, as of right now, but I'm going to see if I can get him on by phone as well.
Mr. Chairman, there are a few people listed as calling you. When you get to the end of the known attendees, I can open them up and see if any of those are nominees.
Sounds good. All right, next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine seven Sinise Williams Riley, A Member of Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Again, Mr. Chair Nina Themelis, Office of Government Relations. I'm, I'm working to connect with her. I have not seen her able to join so far this afternoon.
Okay, next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine eight Robert Charles Brendel, Environmental
Mr. Chair Nina Themelis, again, I will add him on my list of individuals to call in the next few moments.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to let you know, I had trouble getting on the WebEx today for my phone, so if folks are trying to get on from their phone, they may have some issues.
Okay. All right, next up, EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine nine Christina Delgado, Environmental Control Board.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Christina Delgado. I'm an artist educator, community advocate, and cultural leader. I work and live in northeast Baltimore and have worked to design and commission many community art projects in northeast Baltimore, Baltimore City. I have planned and led numerous meetings, events, community programs, and advocacy initiatives during my sixteen or seventeen years here, living in Baltimore. I currently work as the stewardship coordinator for Northeast Housing Initiative, which is a community land trust nonprofit in northeast Baltimore. I also work as a teaching artist and community arts education consultant with Arts for Learning Maryland, and I also am the founder of Tola's Room, which is a collective of the arts community education. And we have embarked on our first solo project, which is an interactive Puerto Rican culture museum. I appreciate having the experience of sitting on the Environmental Control Board for community advocacy. I'm excited to be considered for another term. I enjoy honest conversations around citations issued in the city, and I appreciate some of the charge the Environmental Control Board has taken around beautification in Baltimore with the Be More Beautiful program. And I'm grateful to have an opportunity to share my thoughts around community in a more public capacity.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Brendel, please do come back on.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna, anybody who's, who's not on, we're gonna come back to at the end, all right? So we'll just keep going. Yeah, next up is EA twenty-two dash zero one hundred Andrew Flax, being the number one hundred. I guess you're today's winner. So hopefully that counts some points for you, but take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you again, and thank you, panel. Excuse my hoarse voice, I'm getting over a cold, non-COVID-related, thank goodness. My name is Andy Flax. When I first heard about the vacancy as the small business representative to the Environmental Control Board, I jumped on this. I mean, my, I, since I retired from the federal government in 2014, I've devoted myself to my family and also to volunteering and doing work in Baltimore City. I was a member and then later chairperson of the Baltimore City Public Schools Ethics Panel through my Flax Consulting LLC. I did pro bono work with you, Mr. Chairman, on the Select Committee for the cyber attack back, I think that was 2019, even though years don't even matter to me anymore, I can't remember anything. The mission of this board is one that's near and dear to my heart, environmental, public health, public safety. It's a multi-agency collaboration, and I look at it both ways. You know, if the citation is warranted, then we get a chance to clean up and make, make folks pay for what they have done. If it's not warranted, we can help save somebody's house because if a citation is not paid, you know, the house can be put into the tax sale. So again, both ways, we can, we can, it's all for the good. We could help somebody possibly save their house if a citation was incorrectly issued, and we can remediate the problem if a citation was correctly issued. I look forward to serving on the board. I look forward to continuing my work here in Baltimore City, going on fourteen years that my wife Cindy and I have lived here with our daughter Zoe, and I appreciate the opportunity to be considered for the small business rep on the board.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is EA twenty-two dash zero one zero one Melvin Juddelang, Environmental Control
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. I really appreciate the opportunity to be considered for the Member-at-Large position on the Environmental Control Board. My name is Melvin Jaddelang, and I'm a resident, I'm three years now, Baltimore City, living in central Baltimore and the East Baltimore Midway neighborhood. Coming into the, coming into the city, one of the primary things that I looked into in terms of where I lived is really quality of life and the, the idea of being able to serve on the Environmental Control Board in the position that I have now with the, as a board member and land use chairperson of the Greater Greenmount Community Association, as well as a, I'm also a land use chairperson, land use committee member on the Charles Village Civic Association. We look at these things consistently, right, about the health and safety, wellness, and making sure that quality of life is, is maintained equitably across the entire city. So the, the opportunity to serve on this and engage across multi, multi-departments and my direct work with, in the past with Baltimore Green Space and Be More Beautiful in terms of some community greening projects has really allowed me to connect with the community, learn about the challenges communities face, and see how we can better our city together. My current, my current position is a project manager with a public arts and placemaking firm, and Chairman, I think I met you last year in the Glen neighborhood. I work with Graham Coriol Allen. So you can, you definitely know that the type of work that I do in my day-to-day job is to make sure that we make places accessible for all people. So I really appreciate this opportunity and look forward to the committee's consideration of my appointment to the board. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero one zero two Zoe Rudowski.
She sent a letter, she's not in attendance, she's on a, she's on the flight, so if somebody wants to speak for, otherwise we can decide what we're gonna do with it.
Okay. Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero one zero three Carlilian Thompson, Environmental Control
Can you hear me? Okay.
Get a little closer to your microphone, get a little closer to your phone, Ms. Thompson.
Okay.
No, you're not.
Some issues logging on. So I am an elementary school principal. I have been a product of Baltimore City schools. I'm a graduate of Western High School. I've lived in Baltimore City all of my life. As an elementary school principal, it is very important to me to make sure that our students are educated in keeping our school green, keeping our environment beautiful. We are the proud recipients of a 21st century school, and students are taking responsibility to help to maintain the inside of the building along with the outside of the building. It would be a wonderful opportunity to be considered, to be on this board, Environmental Control Board. I feel that as an educator, there is a lot of knowledge and understanding that I can bring to the table. Thank you again for the consideration.
Thank you very much. Next up is EA twenty-two dash zero one zero four Alice Valpita. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
That's okay. Good afternoon, Committee Chair and Committee Members. My name is Alice Valpita. I am your Baltimore Harbor Waterkeeper with an organization called Blue Water Baltimore. Blue Water Baltimore is a watershed-based organization. Our offices are located in Remington on Sisson Street, and really, the mission of that organization is to protect and restore local waterways, Baltimore's waterways, in order to support thriving communities and a strong economy and a healed environment. And so I have been serving on the Environmental Control Board for several years now. I believe I was first sworn in in 2017, and I'd be honored to serve another term. I think it's very important on this specific board to have diverse opinions and perspectives. And part of my role as Baltimore Harbor Waterkeeper is to speak on behalf of the Patapsco and Back Rivers and their streams and rivers that flow into them. And so by speaking on behalf of our local waterways and amplifying the voices of local residents who rely on those waterways as a matter of their, their way of life is really important when we're talking about citations relating to potential environmental degradation. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate being considered.
Okay, thank you. Next up, EA twenty-two dash zero one zero five Robert Shelton, A Member of Board of
Do you have my picture?
No.
Let me see.
We can't see you.
Even I'm clicking various things and nothing's working, so perhaps I'll just say something. I grew up in Montgomery County. My father was a government lawyer. I went to Oberlin College and Harvard Law School. I came over to Baltimore to clerk for Judge Harvey in the federal court. I'm currently listed in Who's Who Marquee as among the top lawyers of America, for what that's worth. But I'd like to start out by mentioning my, I think, continuing interest in, in civic life. When I came to Baltimore, within a year or two, I was enlisted to work with a young man by the name of Ron Kreitner, who you may know, who was Mayor Schaefer's planner, both in Baltimore and the state and back in Baltimore. And we together established a organization called the Workers Aligned for Community Unity, which you may not be familiar with, but its abbreviation was WOTCO. And we got a government grant and a donation of a school and a church, and then something from the telephone company, and had a neighborhood facilities project that was run totally with trustees from the neighborhood for many, many years. After that, I've done more conventional sorts of public service, including trustee of GBMC for forty years, trustee of MICA and chairman for seven, and on one of the Hopkins Boards. My interest, and I think back around how I could be helpful in terms of Baltimore City life, let me go back. The reason I came to Baltimore is I wanted to be a real lawyer and not a Washington, DC lawyer. And I've found many opportunities to do that in Baltimore. And among other things, in terms of my civic responsibilities, I was on the Advisory Committee for the Maryland Department of, of Housing. I established the Municipal Finance Department, Invenable, and I have represented a number of very significant clients over the years, including the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission and the Maryland Transportation Authority. I was bond counsel for the Baltimore Harmless Tunnel, Johns Hopkins, and various other institutions over time. I have resided since I came to Baltimore and the city, the first two years in Two Charles Center, and for the last forty years, right on the West Park at Three West Mount Vernon Place, on the West Park of Mount Vernon. I hesitate to say this in a way, but Baltimore City is not the city that I came to for various reasons sometime in the past, and I find that it doesn't have the reputation I think that it should have as I move around in life. And I'd like very much the opportunity to do what I can in a limited way, and the area of finance and this particular board would give me that opportunity to do that.
Okay, are you currently on the Board of Finance?
No, this would be a new appointment.
Okay. And you were, and you were appointed by, how did you find out about the, about the commission?
Well, I was asked an opportunity for a number of, of boards, and I understand the powers that be, and are you, are you the, the administrator or the city administrator or the chief of staff? Maybe neither, I don't know.
Neither. I'm not the powers that be. Neither. I'm not the powers that be. I'm just
In any event, I was asked to participate in some way by the current mayor. And I was given a number of opportunities in various boards and I said, well, you pick however you think I could be the the most helpful. And they picked this. The other possibility was the Planning Commission. But I was, I think my talents are more appropriate for the Finance Board and I'd be happy to serve in that capacity. But somebody else I had, somebody else thought that my talents would be best on this board is the long and the short of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Next up EA twenty-two dash zero one zero six. Nicole Battle, Member Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair Nina Themless with Government Relations. Again, I believe Ms. Battle has had some issues joining. I am trying to get in touch with her now.
I'm right here. Is it Powell? Did you say Ann Powell? Is it Ann Powell?
No, no, we're doing battle now.
Oh, so sorry.
No problem. Close enough. Okay, hold on a second. All right, next up EA twenty-two dash zero one zero seven Jill Dennis, Member of Historical and Architectural Preservation.
I'm here on the phone. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, we can. I can see you and hear you.
You can see and hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I am currently serving on the Commission of Historic and Architectural Preservation and have been very happy to do so. I've I'm a Baltimore native, went to Western High School as well. And then I spent my most of my professional career in Washington DC in and around planning and zoning activities and saw that in Washington, there was a very robust preservation group of individuals who were very vocal and were able to help revitalize neighborhoods with historic preservation, historic and architectural preservation principles and methods. And I was interested in finding out if we could do the same thing in Baltimore and in talking with several people, I found out that yes, in fact, we do have that same program here. And I've been very happy to work with it and to see that neighborhoods and homes can be revitalized using historic preservation, tax credits and historic preservation principles. I would like to continue working with the CHAP and hoping to reach more neighborhoods in Baltimore and Baltimore City. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up EA twenty-two dash zero one zero eight Catherine Good, Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Hello, I'm Catherine Good. I am not currently serving with CHAP. I've been nominated. And currently I am the Historic Preservation Practice Leader at Walden Studio Architects. However, we have very recently changed and we are now a part of Michael Graves Architecture and Design. And so we're looking forward to the future with them. I have been in preservation, architecture for fourteen years, focus on many different aspects of preservation, mostly commercial, occasionally residential, but commercial, we focus on all sorts of types of projects, many different sizes. It might be very small or up to, you know, multimillion dollar type projects. We deal with many sorts of projects, whether it's office or multifamily housing or hotels or if it involves a historic building, chances are I am involved with the project for our firm. I have a lot of experience interacting with various historic preservation agencies, including CHAP as well on applications on behalf of projects I'm working on. Also extensively with the National Park Service and with Maryland Historical Trust. And so I'm very much looking forward to seeing how I can help Baltimore's historic preservation community and, you know, working with the guidelines and the other commissioners to continue to encourage folks to preserve all of our important buildings in history and monuments in the city.
Okay, thank you. Next up EA twenty-two dash zero one zero nine Peter Morel, Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair Nina Themless, if he is not on, I will reach out to him now to see if he's also been experiencing some technical difficulties.
Okay. And next up EA twenty-two dash zero one one zero Kupaulin, Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and the rest of the committee. My name is Kupaulin. I'm a resident here in Baltimore, Maryland since two thousand and three, specifically living and working in the historic CHAP District of Fells Point. I am a licensed architect in the state of Maryland, amongst other states. I'm also a licensed new home builder, home improvement builder and a general contractor in the state of Maryland. I own a number of entities here in Baltimore City. I am co-founder of PIKLE Studio. We're architecture and development, design build studio founded in two thousand and ten. It's a woman-owned and minority-owned business in Baltimore City. I'm also the sole owner of PIKLE Construction, co-founder Library Nineteen, a new entity in Fells Point and Baltimore City. That is also a woman-owned business. And also one of many members of a new collective called Ali Bill of Baltimore. Currently, I serve on a number of committees. I'm a commissioner, currently a commissioner on the Public Art Commission through the Baltimore Office of Promotion of the Arts. Have been there for over seven years now. I'm a former chair of the Fells Point Design Review Committee ARC and was a member there for five years. Also a member of the Capital Improvements Committee for the Friends of Patterson Park. And lastly, I was the, I'm also a current union member of the Local Four Eighty Seven for film production in the Mid-Atlantic. I also taught here in two different institutions. I've taught many years here at the Maryland Institute College of Art and different design discipline departments. And also the School of Architecture and Planning at Morgan State University. Why I want to serve on the commission, I just, you know, been working and practicing here for nearly twenty years now. So we've, I've built, you know, a lot of roots here, not only as a practitioner, not only as a community member, but also a business owner, as a developer, as a community member. And, you know, as while working here for these many years, really learning the process, not only the public process, but working on both sides of the table, working as a practitioner and engaging CHAP and CHAP staff, as well as working on the other side of the table, you know, working as a committee member for the local ARC. So, you know, really want to continue to to provide whatever I can to the committee as just another lens to to help the effort of of, you know, working with projects that come to the to the commission, whether it be renovations, adaptive reuse or new construction projects. And really look for that that dialogue between not only the historic architecture and historic fabric, but knowing that the contemporary architecture still is evolving and wants to find a dialogue with each other. And so I hope to bring a voice to that and to find ways to engage CHAP staff in an even more meaningful level and understanding the procedures, the rules and regulations, and always looking to evolve those as an advocate to not only designers, developers, community members, but anyone that's affected by, you know, new development in the city. So so as a nominee, I'm happy to be here and humbled and hope to continue that work.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up EA twenty-two dash zero one 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 Ann Powell. Ann, are you with us?
I'm just turning on my video. There we go. Hey, I'm Ann Powell and I am, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am an architect in Baltimore City. I'm also a city. Sorry, could you, were you able to hear me? Sorry. Okay, I'm a city resident and I've been an architect here for the last eighteen years. I live in Roland Park and I practice in Mount Vernon. On this commission, I represent the Greater Baltimore Committee and I have for the last three years on CHAP. And I'd like to serve on CHAP to serve to support the stewardship of our city's historic resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Do you need me to add additional information?
Um, no, that's it. Thank you so much. Okay, next up. EA twenty-two dash zero one one two Dr. Gary Rodwell.
Yes, I'm trying to start my video. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. That's it.
All right. Yes, I am Dr. Gary Rodwell. I have been nominated to serve on the CHAP Committee. I am a nominee representing the historical preservation community, Baltimore Heritage and many other historical preservation organizations. I'm a native Baltimorean. I grew up in Baltimore City, graduated from Northwestern High School, earned my bachelor's degree from Howard University and then a master's from the University in Southern California, another master's from Johns Hopkins and ultimately my doctorate from the University of Southern California. I have basically had two careers, one as an academic administrator and professor where I've taught at in the doctoral program at Morgan State University and then in many other capacities at colleges and universities in Baltimore and in Maryland. And also I've been a professional, I am a professional community organizer and have organized around the country as communities have invited me in. Currently, the Copenh heights Community Development Corporation is where I am the Executive Director. In my professional career in organizing in many communities, I have built power organizations that are located in challenged communities, communities that have been able to make use of the historic tax credit incentive and then others that have not been able to. And in many of these communities, I have built affordable homes for families here in Baltimore with the Copenh heights Community Development Corporation. We have built affordable homes for families here. We've also completed a historic renovation at the Hebrew Orphan Asylum, the Center for Healthcare and Healthy Living. And as a result, have participated with many in the historic preservation community. The building, we submitted the building to the National Historic Registry and the building was identified as a national historic monument and as a result became a recipient of tax credits and historic tax credits and local and and local historic tax credits. As a result of that, I've been very much exposed to the historical preservation communities, challenges and benefits. Currently, the development project that we are building on North Avenue, West North Avenue, we're building it in a section that has not been identified as eligible for historic tax credits. And I now know how important that incentive is for neighborhoods. And I would like to be on the commission, first to serve those who have nominated me to do so. And secondly, to explore how this incentive can be made available to communities that are underserved. I hope to be a liaison and to figure out how we can make this tool available to more communities in Baltimore City because although historic preservation has challenges because things have to be met and sometimes those things are more costly than one would hope for. But what I've observed is that the advantage that it provides in terms of revitalizing those communities is is a key asset. And I hope to be a bearer of that asset.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine six Anthony Williams.
Mr. Chair, I believe Mr. Williams is on as an attendee, so he may need to be unmuted.
Do you know which number he's calling from?
He's actually on now. He's been elevated to panelist, so he should be able to speak.
Mr. Williams, are you there?
Mr. Williams, can you hear us? He's showing up on the screen, but he's not responding. Okay. If you want to give him a minute, Mr. Chair, I noticed that Peter Morel Nomination One O Nine has rejoined. He may be available and we can
Hold on a second. Mr. Williams, are you there? All right, if not, we'll move on to next one EA twenty-two dash zero one one three. Harry Spikes, Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Chairman, thank you so much. Nice to see all of you. I hope you all are having a great day. I promise I won't be long. I'm originally from Washington DC. I was a former district director for the late, great Congressman Elijah Cummings. And the areas of issues that I worked on for him were housing, education, policy, workforce development and community outreach, along with homelessness. Currently, I'd like to share with you all that I am the representative for the Maryland Historical Trust for Baltimore City. Why I've had the honor for the last twelve years to work with over twenty-three county representatives. And in those last twelve years, we've had the opportunity to give historical tax credits, work on monument issues, work on land masses, work on waterways and make sure that those organizations of those municipalities get the right information and have the right historical context and monies to preserve. So I'm very proud to do that as well. So I'm very proud to do that as well. Also, in my spare time, I am the vice president of the Community Assistance Network, where it's the largest nonprofit organization in Baltimore County, where we help people who have challenges with homeless services and are trying to get back on their feet. So I'm very proud to do that. I've been doing that for over fifteen years. I currently am the vice president for monument strategies. We work on policy issues that help out people across and citizens across America. I'm so honored to have the opportunity to be a nominee for the Merlin, for chap, because as Merlin Historical and being part of the Maryland Historical Trust, we had the opportunity, and I've had the opportunity, to actually work with chap, and we're going to several issues in Baltimore City. So I'd like to say that my experience at the Maryland Historical Trust has given me a great opportunity to continue to be a public servant, and I consider myself a public servant. Finally, I will say this. I'm a graduate of the great Morgan State University, which is a historical black college and university. And also, I am a proud member of the Oliver community, where I can say, I know a lot of people have mentioned housing. I actually purchased a vacant home and had the vacant home rehab with me, my father, and my brother. So I have a very different love for Baltimore City and very happy to be here, and this is home. And finally, in my spare time, I'm a park builder. I like to build parks in different communities and build parks. Currently building one in East Baltimore right now. So just happy to have the opportunity. I promise I wouldn't take long, but thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you so much and good to see you again, Harry.
Good to see you too.
All right, we'll move on. Next one I see here is EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine eight, Robert Charles Brendel, Environmental Control Board.
That's correct. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. I think that I owe that of the city a debt of gratitude. Born, bred, raised, educated from that grammar school, high school, and college, all within its, its, its boundaries has brought me to where I am so far. I was fortunate enough to even attend that of the University of Baltimore to get my law degree from that of the institution, all which resonates well and helps to make me personally a success and to try to give back that to the city. When I saw that the opportunity was to be considered for that of the real estate representative, I matched that up with that of my position as a real estate broker, as well as that of an attorney who had a practice limited to that of real property, real property type matters. I saw that the ECB, that of the board itself, is not out for vindictiveness by any means at an appellate level, but rather to help institute that of the reasonableness of just how the city and the board itself, what the purpose is for, and what the benefit it derives overall, based upon, once again, the protecting the health, the safety, and the quality of life issues with that of the city. That's what I have. Thank you, your chairman.
All right, thank you very much. Next up. We'll go back around. EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine three Kevin O'Connor, Board of Fire Commissioners. Is he here?
Mr. Chair, name is Thamless with Government Relations. He is on as an attendee and he is dialed in by phone. He is listed as call-in user number six.
Hey, Richard, can you unmute? Calling number six.
Okay. Okay, he should be, he should be ready.
Thank you very much. I can, thank you very much. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to chat with you and members of the committee. My name is Kevin O'Connor. I'm very honored that Mayor Scott has nominated me to serve on the Board of Fire Commissioners. A little bit about my background, I'm a native Baltimorean, grew up in northeast Baltimore. I have a great love for the city. I always have. I believe that the mayor probably selected and nominated me because of my experience in the fire service. My entire correctional, professional career has been dedicated to public safety and public service. I joined the Baltimore County Fire Department back in nineteen eighty-five. I served in various roles, both as a line firefighter and as the agent, chief of department for a number of years. My career kind of took a different direction. I went over to Washington DC, and for about twenty years, I ran the governmental affairs and public policy division of the International Association of Firefighters, which is the umbrella organization representing about three hundred and twenty-nine firefighters, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand firefighters across the country. In that role, I led most of their strategic initiatives and was their chief lobbyist. I'm very proud to say that, you know, I lobbied a great many bills that directly benefited the Baltimore City Fire Department. Among them, the assistance to firefighter grants programs, which has purchased numerous pieces of apparatus, personal protective equipment for Baltimore firefighters, as well as the SAFER program, which is a staffing program in which the federal government puts money into staffing, and that has been utilized on a few occasions by the Baltimore Department. Civically, I've always served on various boards and commissions. I'm proud to have served as a commissioner of the Maryland Fire Rescue Education Training Commission. I was appointed to that role by then-Governor Schaefer. Subsequently, Governor Glenn Danning asked me to serve on the Economic Development Commission for the state. More recently, I was an O'Malley appointee to the University of Maryland Medical Systems, primarily in that role because of the intersection that shock trauma has with EMS and emergency response. I currently serve on the Babe Ruth Museum Board over on Emery Street. And nationally, I chaired the Congressional Fire Service Institute for a number of years and received their lifetime achievement of Fire Service Award, which is the highest accolade that they provide someone in the fire service on the federal level. I love the Baltimore Fire Department. It has extraordinarily rich history. It is the second professional fire department in the country. One of the things in their industry now are departments gravitating to treating people medically. EMS medic units, Baltimore has run a medic service since nineteen twenty-nine, one of the first in the nation. A little known fact, but CPR, which is taught everywhere now, was originally conceived by the battalion chief of the Baltimore Fire Department, the guy named Marty McMahon, who pioneered closed chest massage. It's a department, and there's a lot to be proud of. And if this, this committee and the council views favorably upon it, I just simply would like to help out and continue in that vein.
All right, thank you very much, and you came very highly recommended, so thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you very much.
Next up EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine four Erica Fox.
Who was one of the regret letters, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Fox and Wajinski.
Okay. And which one did you say was the other one?
One, one oh nine Peter Morale. He looks like he's on now.
No, no, what was the other one that you said also sent the letter?
One oh two Zoe Wajinski for the Environmental Control Board.
Okay. Gotcha. I have that. All right, the next one I have here is EA twenty-two dash zero zero nine seven, Sanees Williams Riley.
Well. If you want to finish what, who's on now, I can, I can go back into the.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just going through what I got here. The next one I have is one oh six. EA twenty-two dash zero one oh six Nicole Battle. Nicole Battle. Nope. Next up is EA twenty-two dash zero one oh nine Peter Morale.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the time. My name is Peter Morale, originally from Delaware, but has been a resident of Baltimore for the past ten years in the Remington neighborhood. I attended the College of Charleston, South Carolina for historic preservation and community planning, after which I went on to work at the National Park Service and then at the Maryland Historical Trust, which is what brought me to Baltimore. After a few years there, I went to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, where I am the Director of Cultural Resources for the Land Acquisition and Planning Unit there. So, you know, I get to travel all over the state doing historic preservation work, but I don't get to spend a whole lot of time in Baltimore. So I'm really excited to be able to take part in this commission and be able to apply some of my expertise to projects in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see what we got. All right, I think that that concludes it. So just, Richard, just to confirm, ninety-four and one oh two both sent letters. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the ones that are absent without letters is ninety-six, ninety-seven, and one oh six. So let's, let's vote on all of them except for ninety-six, ninety-seven, and one oh six.
Mr. Chair, I can check the phones and see if any of them are stuck there before you move it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, call-in user four. Okay. Oh, user, call-in number four. Can you hear me? Oh. No response. Okay, so.
Any, any comments in the chat that anybody's trying to? Nope. Okay, all right, let's, let's just start voting.
Six fifteen oh eight. Oh, hello, call.
Yes, Anthony Williams. You got me? You hear me?
That's number, that's number ninety-six, Mr. Chair.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you see me? Can you hear me? Can you see me?
I can hear you. I cannot see you.
Message you have low bandwidth, Mr. Williams.
It's ridiculous. All right, anyway, hello, my name is Anthony Williams, born and raised in Baltimore City. In twenty fifteen, I started working on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is called the Twenty Twenty Campaign. After that, we had initiated a ballot, the ballot question J, which was implemented for the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I worked with United Workers, the Housing Roundtable, many and various groups on the ground to get question ballot J implemented and put through. It was put through. We got over twenty thousand signatures, day-to-day outreach, going door-to-door, telling tenants and city people here in Baltimore that we need Affordable Housing Trust Fund so that we can ensure and keep housing affordable for all the people living here in Baltimore. I was also born and raised here in Baltimore, grew up in foster care, homeless as a youth, homeless as an adult, often on homelessness as a youth, okay? Right now, I sit on the Executive Board Committee of the Continuum of Care. I'm also the, the lead chair of the Consumer Lead Advisory Committee on the mayor's office. I'm also working very hard and diligently every day to work towards ending homelessness here in Baltimore City. I believe that we got a bad shift. I believe that we need to change our, change the status quo. I also believe that we need people that are on this commission that would do their due diligence to make sure that housing is affordable and stayed affordable for all working people, for all people that are experiencing homelessness, for all the poor people here in Baltimore City. And with that said, part of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is to keep rents affordable to people that are getting ready or experiencing homelessness to thirty percent area of medium income. Fifty percent of those funds were initiated and passed through the commission that the rents for people with subsidies and experiencing homelessness going into housing, that we have a strong area of medium income at thirty percent, with fifty percent of the funds going into this Housing Trust Fund for homeless people. That's what we want, and that's what I want to guarantee that will happen. I do not play about homelessness. I take this issue very seriously. And with that said, are you done? Because I have to go to another executive board meeting of the CLC. But thanks for hearing from me anyway, and please get back to me in a timely manner. It took very, very long, very long, almost two years to get even, I guess, considered. I don't know. But anyway, I'm out of here, okay? Talk to you soon.
All right, thanks. Hopefully it was worth the wait. I'm not sure what the holdup was, but we'll be voting on it.
I just vote, get it done. We can get the work done. All the issues I have in the past are gone.
That's glad to hear. All right, Richard, we can, we can start voting unless.
When I put my shoes together, which, which ones are we not rolling on?
The only.
Mr. Chair, I believe Nicole Battle is on now.
Nicole Battle.
I believe she's a call-in user as call-in user number eight, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I have a nine. I don't see it. Let's find number nine.
Yeah, there is no eight on here.
Let's find number nine. Hello, caller, number nine. Hello.
Nicole Battle, are you on?
I am. I'm on.
Okay. All right, it's, it's your turn to speak.
Okay, I'm, hi, I'm Nicole Battle. I am the CEO of Gov'n Vecumental Development Corporation, and I apologize for not being there. I was unaware that this was happening today, so I'm really sorry I'm missing it. I don't know what else to say other than I, I accept the nomination of being on the chap board, and if there are any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Richard, we can, we can start voting. If you start at the top, we're going to vote everyone except for ninety-seven.
We're taking out now, so I don't. Get in front of my shoes. Okay, first one is twenty-two oh oh eight nine Alexander Grayson for Sustainability.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Burnett, seconded by Conway.
Okay. Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello. See him on the board, so we'll welcome his absence soon when we come back. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance.
Aye, Richard.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there are six votes, any affirmative, no, no negatives, one absent, and we can, we can go to second read on April fourth with the in-person meeting. If that's the, if that's the committee's desire.
All right, let's move on to the next one.
Twenty-two oh oh nine oh Stacy Griffin for Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Conway.
Jeff Schleifer?
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello? Still absent. Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, second read on. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, second read on April fourth. Next up. You ready to proceed, Mister Chair?
Yeah, that's, yeah, let's keep going.
EA twenty-two zero zero nine one Cedric Lee, Commissioner on Sustainability.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Conway.
Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello. No response. Still absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Aye.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Aye.
Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, second read on the fourth, Mister Chair. EA twenty-two oh oh nine two Jared Lyles, uh, Commissioner on Sustainability.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Conway.
Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello, still absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Aye.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Aye.
Six affirmative, no negative, second read on April fourth. EA twenty-two oh oh nine three Kevin O'Connor for the Fire Commissioners.
Move to approve.
Second.
Who was the second?
Conway.
Conway.
Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer. Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello, still appears at the absence. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Aye.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister, Mister Conway.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. Second read on the fourth. EA twenty-two oh oh nine four Erica Fox, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Do I have a motion?
I saw moved.
Did we, did we hear from from this nominee?
Yeah, I think the only one we had.
There's a motion by Mister Burnett. Is there a second?
Second by Torrance.
I'm sorry. Who was the second?
Torrance.
Torrance.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm having some audio difficulties here. Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello, still absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Aye.
Mother Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Aye.
Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. EA twenty-two oh oh nine five Tishagoff, remember Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second Torrance.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Torrance.
Torrance, I saw that one, thank you. Uh, Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello is still absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Aye.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Aye.
Mister Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no, uh, negatives. Second read on the fourth. EA twenty-two oh oh nine six Anthony Williams, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Burnett.
Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Yes.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, moving to second reader. Now, this is the spot in the order where we would have come to ninety-seven, Denise Williams Riley, or we're just holding out for future action?
Yes.
Okay, then we move on to EA twenty-two oh oh nine eight Robert Charles Brendel, Environmental Control Board.
Do I have a motion?
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Burnett.
Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. The Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Aye.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Aye.
Mister Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, second read on the fourth. EA twenty-two oh oh nine nine Christine Delgado, member Environmental Control Board.
I saw moved.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Burnett. Do we have a second? Second by Ramos.
Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes.
Really where I think we need to begin. Um, this outlines that the basic functions of the continuum of care have largely been carried out by M O H S, that the board and the membership body direct the work of the collaborative applicant.
That might be Anthony Williams, he's on the.
Um, but.
It says it's a, it's E A Gmail or something.
Let me get. I, I could do it. Couple of seconds, I'll be. Okay, here's me and Mister Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we'll, uh, we're on EA twenty-two oh oh nine nine Delgado for the Environmental Control Board. We have a motion by member Burnett, seconded by member Ramos, um, Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Aye.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Aye.
Mister Conway votes aye. Mister Chair, six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, we can go to second reader um, on the fourth. We're in the triple digits. EA twenty-two zero one zero zero Andrew Flax for the Environmental Control Board.
I move it in nomination favorable. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ramos.
It was moved by the chair and seconded by member Ramos. Hey, Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello is still absent. Uh, Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Mem- Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Aye.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Aye.
Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, second read on April fourth. EA twenty-two zero one zero one Melvin Jatalang, member Environmental Control Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
So who was the second?
Burnett.
Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Aye.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Aye.
Mister Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, second read on the fourth. Twenty-two zero one zero two Zoe Rysalski, member Environmental Control Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Seconded by.
Burnett.
Okay. Sorry, that, that ended with very, uh, vague on my, mic, um. Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Uh, Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Aye.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Aye.
Mister Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. Second read on the fourth. Twenty-two zero one zero three Colleen Thompson, Environmental Control Board.
Uh, move the nomination.
Is that Mister Burnett?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Second.
Seconded by member Ramos. Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Yes.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Yes.
Mister Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. EA twenty-two zero one zero four Alice Volpita, member Environmental Control Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mister Burnett. Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Yes.
Mother Torrance votes aye. Mister Conway.
Yes.
Mister Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, second read on the fourth. EA twenty-two zero one zero five Robert Shelton for Board of Finance.
Move to approve.
Moved by number Ramos, seconded by.
Second.
Mister Burnett. Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett votes aye. Mister Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Number Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance.
Yes.
Mister Torrance votes aye. Member Conway.
Yes.
Member Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives, second read on the fourth. EA twenty-two zero one zero six Nicole Battle for Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Burnett. Jeff Schleifer.
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mister Burnett.
Yes.
Mister Burnett. Votes aye. Mister Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mister Torrance. Number Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance? Mr. Torrance?
Yes.
They were muted, uh, uh, yeah. Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. Somebody may be trying to reach us, so when we're done this, we can make one more sweep. EA twenty-two zero one zero seven, Jill Dennis, for historical and archite- architectural preservation.
Uh, move the nomination.
Second.
Mr. Burnett, seconded by number Ramos. Jeff Schleifer?
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Number Ramos?
Yes.
Number Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Yes.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. Second read on the fourth. EA twenty-two zero one zero eight, Catherine Good, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Move to approve.
Move by number Ramos.
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Middleton. Jeff Schleifer?
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Number Costello? So Mr. Costello is still absent. Um, Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Number Ramos?
Yes.
Number Ramos votes aye. Well, somebody else has, okay. Let me see who that is.
It's, uh, Robert Rendell?
There you go. Okay, well, let's. Okay, we won. One oh eight, Catherine Good. We have, um. Affirmative from Schleifer, Burnett, Middleton, Ramos, come, uh, Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. Second read on the fourth. Twenty-two zero one zero nine, Peter Morel, uh, Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Move to approve?
Moved by, motion by number Ramos, seconded by?
Second.
Vice President Milton? Jeff Schleifer?
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer? Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello is absent. Vice President Milton?
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Number Ramos?
Yes.
Number Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance? Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. Second read on the fourth. EA twenty-two zero one one zero, Cool Power Ling, uh, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Uh, moved the nomination.
Second.
Okay, with Mr. Burnett moving, oh, yeah. Mr. Burnett moved, and number Ramos seconds. Jeff Schleifer?
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Um, Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello is absent. Vice President Milton?
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Number Ramos?
Yes.
Number Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Remember, Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. Second read on the fourth. Twenty-two zero one one one, Ann Powell, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Motion to move?
Vice President Milton moves favorable. Seconded by, seconded by number Ramos. Jeff Schleifer?
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello is absent. Vice President Milton?
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Number, Number Ramos?
Yes.
Number Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. Second read on the fourth. EA twenty-two zero one one two, Gary Radwell, uh, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
So moved to.
Mr. Torrance? Moved, nomination seconded by number Ramos. Jeff Schleifer?
Yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Vice President Milton votes aye. Number Ramos?
Yes.
Number Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. Second read on the fourth. Last on the list, EA twenty-two zero one one three, Harry Spikes, Commission on Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Uh, I make a motion to move that nomination favorable. Do I have a second?
It's chaired by? Jeff Schleifer?
Seconded by Burnett.
Seconded by number Burnett. Okay. Jeff Schleifer?
Uh, yes.
Jeff Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Number Ramos?
Yes.
Number Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second read on the fourth. Mr. Chair, if you like, I can go back into attendees and see if they're missing, uh, nominated, posted.
No, I think we already went through, we already went through the attendees.
Okay, well, you know, there's a call, call and use of four.
You can try it if you'd like.
No, it looks like, looks like they hung up, so.
Okay.
That's, that's our best effort, Mr. Chair.
Yep, all right, we're good to go.
Okay, so we're gonna have to, uh, decide with the mayor's office what we're doing, uh, on, uh, ninety-seven.
No problem.
We, we got one more, we got one more meeting to act on that after the fourth.
Okay. All right, well, we can close down this meeting. We're, we're adjourned.